Yes, he did. He did.
You know, whereas I'm like, I'm gonna take her and teach her about pride.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
All the materialistic things.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll call the September 22 meeting of the Glendale City Council to order. May we have a roll call, please? Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero. Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian and the invocation by City Clerk, Artie Casack.
Please rise and face the flag and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Hundred and forty-seven years ago today, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, which freed three million Americans of slavery. Yesterday marked the eighteenth anniversary of the independence of the Republic of Armenia from Soviet dominion. Our invocation tonight is a prayer for freedom. That idea of individual freedom, freedom of speech, freedom to pursue happiness, all these upon which our country was founded, for which so many around the world living under oppression still struggle for today. We pray with humble gratitude for this, that liberty, the preservation of which has been earned with the blood, sweat, and tears of patriots. We pray that our actions as leaders and members of this community will feed the flame of freedom and act as a beacon for others to find their way to. Also, amen.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the September 22, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 17, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Before we go to Agenda Item A, the preview, I think we should announce that Item 8D, the Proposed Residential Window Replacement Draft Design Guidelines, et cetera, we are going to move. Mr. Starburg, will you let the public know?
Yes, Mayor. You suggested that instead of holding the discussion this evening, we reschedule that for a study session. As the discussion of replacement draft design guidelines and possible enforcement options for properties with replacement windows installed without permit, both that issue of enforcement as well as the discussion of the draft design guidelines for windows has been suggested that we reschedule that to a study session yet to be determined.
And can the Director of Planning shed a little light on what we would do at the study session, how we would organize?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We will schedule a study session in which we will actually separate the issues of standards and guidelines from enforcement, and we will have in-depth discussions on each side, which are, which will be related, but we think it's best to keep them separate. We'll give ample opportunity and notice to the public so they will know of the date of the study session so that they can be present, and we'll preferably look for an afternoon.
Okay. I think this item deserves discussion and a little better presentation that we can do tonight at the end of a very busy agenda.
So we'd be taking that matter off calendar?
If there is no objection, the matter will go off calendar.
Off calendar. We'll come back with a date and a study session time.
Okay. Thank you very much. What's next?
At 3:00, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3:00 A. is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of September 29, 2009.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Housing Authority Meeting for September 29, there are no business items. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency as well, there are no business items. We do however have a joint public meeting of the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency. We have three items. Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services and Development Services regarding construction progress of the Glendale Adult Rec Center project. Director of Parks again, and Development Services regarding status report of the proposed water playground projects at Maple Park and Griffith Manor. A public hearing. Director of Development Services proposed mixed-use retail office commercial condominium project to be located at 610 West Broadway. For the evening meeting starting at 6:00 P. M. for the City Council, we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works Gladys Drive Slope and Roadway Project. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Amendment to a standard multi-tenant office lease agreement for office facilities. General Manager of GWP Dryden Water Replacement. General Manager of GWP Amendment to a professional services agreement for architectural, engineering, design services at the Utility Operations Center. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Painting of Streetlight Standards on various city streets. Acting Director of Community Development and Housing and the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. Workforce Federal Economic Stimulus Funds to California Manufacturing Technology Consulting. Acting Director of Community Development and Housing, this is a submission of a grant application to the California Energy Commission and the State Employment Development Department. We have a number of action items. Director of Human Resources Occupational Health Services. The Fire Chief, Fire Company Inspection Fees. The Police Chief Discussion Regarding the Police Department's Implementation of an Area Command Service Delivery Model. Acting Chief of Police Imposition of Booking Fees on Convicted Arrestees. And then we have a number of departments coming forward. Director of Community Development and Housing. Director of Planning. The Fire Chief and Public Works Recommendation for a Change Order for Consulting Services for the CSI Project. And we have a hearing. Director of Planning Appeal of Zoning Use Certificate Number 2006 20234, and it's located on Honolulu Avenue. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Next is at 3:00 B. GYA Sponsors for Employees of Tomorrow Awards Luncheon.
Okay, do we have some GYA reps here? Good evening, Mayor. My name's Art Resendez. I'm a board member of the GYA. We have with me Patricia Carlos, also a fellow board member. We're here representing Glendale Youth Alliance and recognizing some sponsors of our latest youth luncheon. With me, we have Glenn Steiger, I believe, to hear tonight. Glenn Steiger, General Manager of the Glendale Water and Power. We have Stephen Zern, Director of Public Works of the City of Glendale. Eric Olson from the Downtown Merchants Association, as well as Betty Porto.
Helen.
Oh, Helen, I'm sorry.
Ms. Resendez.
And we're also thanking Los Angeles County Supervisor Michael Antonovich and Walt Disney Company, as well as the Greg Buschager Memorial Foundation. We have Stephen Buschager here representing that, so. Patricia?
We just want to thank all of our sponsors and the continued success of GYA. Without our sponsors, we wouldn't be able to be as successful as we are, helping the youth of Glendale and Glendale area. So, thank you so much for your support of GYA and to our sponsors. Thank you.
We appreciate the sponsors and the board members that work very, I know, work very hard to keep the organization going, along with the staff. They do an incredible job. We all attended the youth luncheon, and it was spectacular as usual. And as I keep saying, I've used the GYA for years on my slope. They do a great job, and now it's still hot, still potential for fire, so people who are watching the City Council meeting should keep the Glendale Youth Alliance in mind for any work that they need to do around their house. So I have a number of commendations for the sponsors, and they read, "An appreciation for your sponsorship of the Glendale Youth Alliance. Your valuable support of this worthwhile organization has made a positive difference in the lives of our employees of tomorrow. Thank you for your generosity. Signed, Frank Quintero." Mayor. And to the Downtown Glendale Merchants Association, it's a gold-level sponsorship. For Greg Buschager's Memorial Foundation, a platinum-level sponsorship. For Glendale Public Works, a platinum-level sponsorship. Glendale Water and Power, a jewel-level sponsorship. And to Supervisor Mike Antonovich, a gold-level sponsorship.
On behalf of the merchants, we appreciate the very important service provided for many of the civic organizations here in Glendale, and the GYA has been one of those backbones, serving the youth, serving the community. We're delighted to be a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Buschager from the Greg Buschager Memorial Foundation, and as always, it feels good to participate, it feels good to support, and it feels good to be recognized, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. To keep the funds flowing to GYA, don't forget to shop if you're interested in a Ford, Lincoln, Mercury, or Mazda product, right there on Brand Boulevard. And the City of Glendale, of course, will reap the sales tax. Mr. Steiger.
On behalf of Glendale Water and Power, it's my pleasure to accept this, and it's just a true joy to see the youth around and helping us out, and I love to see the yellow shirts. I always know when they're there. And it's presented a great conduit for us to actually develop future employees for GWP, which has already occurred, so thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you for this. It's a pleasure, as Glenn said, to work constantly for the last several years with the GYA, not only developing the youth, but also using them to effectively take care of some of the issues that we need to take care of on a daily basis. So, thank you, and thank you to the GYA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Is there another presentation?
There is one under City Council and Staff Comments.
All right. Next, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
All right, any comments? Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I had two things I've tried to get an answer to down at Americana. One, I'm trying to recollect back when we approved the project. The parking structure is a sizable structure with two exits, entrances and exits, one on Brand and one on Central. I'm down there at least three times a week. Many nights, the exit off, or to Brand, is blocked off, and you have to go off at Central. If I want to go east on Harvard, I have one signal. If I want to go east on Harvard from the Central, I have to go through seven traffic lights to do it. If I want to go east on Broadway, I have to go through five signals. And I would think that the traffic studies that we did were based on the fact there was two entrances and exits. I've asked Caruso affiliated, and I've asked staff, and nobody's been able to give me an answer yet why they're blocking it off. I think they ought to both be open. I know in a fire or something, earthquake, they would open it up, but I don't know why it's ever closed. And the second thing, sometime when I'm sitting and eating at Amish's, Crusoe Avenue and Orange are public streets, and where you turn from Crusoe Way onto Orange heading south next to Barnes Noble, there's a yellow zone capable of parking three cars. Yellow, I think, is loading, unloading? I've sat there, and I've watched people park there and go shopping. One time, I called over to RPD, they came and ticketed. But every time I'm down there, people seem to think that yellow zone is reserved for their parking. I'd mentioned that to Caruso, that there'll be some signage put there explaining what a yellow zone is, but they continue to park there. If not, maybe our patrol can drive by occasionally. They do it every night. I just can't believe the people, young and old, that seem to think the yellow zone has been reserved just for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Just a couple things. First, on Saturday, I had the privilege in participating in what I think was the city's first survey of bicyclists and pedestrians, where we had eighty-five volunteers go around the city to different locations and do two-hour counts of the pedestrians and bicyclists going by. And I wanted to thank those volunteers, but I particularly wanted to thank the Downtown Merchants Association, who was asked to maybe help and give the volunteers five-dollar gift certificates to thank them, and instead came up with twenty-five-dollar and up gift certificates that they gave to all of the volunteers, who didn't know that they'd be getting these prizes, and were very happy to get gift certificates from Damon Steakhouse Massage Envy and the Alex Theater. So I'd like to thank all of those businesses particularly. And just to tell you a little story that one of the volunteers told me, to give you an idea of the kind of community we live in. She was on a particular corner, I think down on Chevy Chase somewhere, and there was a little shop, a little cafe, I think it was a kebab house of some sort, and she asked if she could sit down for the two hours she was going to be there. The owner said, "Fine, no problem," so she sat down and was doing her count, and about fifteen minutes later, the owner came out with a tray of espressos and snacks for her on the house, just to, you know, thank her for being a community volunteer. And she was totally surprised by this, and I just thought it was such a wonderful sign of the community coming together and supporting something that I wanted to recount it to all of you. The second thing is that last week, I had the honor of representing the city at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and it was a very interesting conference where there were all kinds of seminars about things like city financing and redevelopment and all kinds of issues, and it also gave me the chance to speak to other elected officials to see what their communities were doing in this recession. The League passed a number of resolutions, including one to put legislation on the ballot for next year to try to prevent the state legislature from taking city revenues, as they're trying to do now, which is very important. But there were all kinds of other things that I was exposed to, and one I wanted to mention tonight that I would like to ask the council or the Redevelopment Agency to consider and for the Arts and Culture Commission to discuss, is a program that's been very successfully implemented in other areas, such as in downtown Los Angeles, the City of Long Beach, and other places. It's a way to deal with the inevitable occurrence that's happening more and more now in this economy, which is vacant storefronts. And what the program is, it's, there are nonprofit groups, there's one that's located in downtown Los Angeles. In Long Beach, the city sponsors one of the local galleries, and it costs the city practically nothing. And what they do is, when there's a vacant storefront, rather than just having it boarded up or having an empty window, they come in and do a public art piece in that window. And they pre-curate them, so the artists are kind of lined up, and they can come in and put this in, and what it does is, it, of course, makes the street look occupied, it creates visual interest for people passing by. And interestingly, what the owners of the buildings have discovered in Long Beach is that it makes their buildings rent much faster, because it brings people's attention to the buildings. And it's so successful that now they don't have to seek out these vacant buildings. As soon as it's vacant, the merchants, the owners contact them and say, "Hey, I have this vacant space, can we get a piece of art in there?" And they're ready to come right in, because they've all been pre-curated. Cost the city, they said pretty much nothing, and it's been extremely successful, so successful that Long Beach now has a gallery crawl, sort of, of these storefront art spaces that brings people into their community. So, hopefully, we won't have a lot of vacant storefronts, but I still think that even if we have two or three in the city, it's something that we should look into, and it would be a win for the artists, a win for the building owners, and certainly for the community. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
I did have one other thing. It won't concern you, Mr. Draymond.
Uh-oh.
That's not bad.
Here we go.
Last week, I was watching the Arts and Culture Commission, and it came, and the item came up about naming two arts and culture commissioners and two parks and rec commissioners to work with the applicant for this piano chair. They concluded that they, the four of them, were to meet and make a recommendation directly to the City Council. I didn't remember anything like that. I went back and looked at the council meeting that brought up. I was in Hawaii, so I didn't remember, but I listened to what you said. And you had said that they should meet with the applicant and try to help promote it and bring sponsors or whatever in. So the Arts and Culture Commission is going a totally different tack. They weren't clear on what they were supposed, their charge was. So they're planning on coming directly to the council with a recommendation. So, I think staff better straighten that out.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, let me respond to that in a second. I don't know if Councilmember Friedman would like a second on moving that notion forward, I mean, a second council member, but Councilmember Friedman, you happen to be the vice-chair of the Redevelopment Agency, and I think you have, of course, every right to place that on our agenda, and I would certainly endorse that.
Just to straighten it out.
Yeah. This issue, you are quite right, Mr. Weaver. I had asked for a joint subcommittee of the Arts and Culture Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission, since the applicant you're speaking of was interested in both arts issues, potentially to be funded by the city, and facilities, use of facilities. It's true, the applicant would like the city to fund this, and he's met with a number of us, I have met with him directly, and my comment to him was that the process that I would raise publicly in an open session was the one you mentioned and the one I'm addressing now. I had asked for that joint subcommittee to be put together, to meet with that applicant, to determine exactly what the needs are, exactly, pin down exactly what they're talking about, and to help steer them to sources of revenue in the community that could help them with that project, also, to, through their commissions, respective commissions, if they so chose, to make a recommendation to the council to look at this as something for the future. The applicant has since contacted me literally dozens of times to say that the clock is running and time is running out, we may not be able to do that this year, and my position is, if there isn't enough time to vet this properly for this year, then perhaps next year, but that there isn't, there isn't, I believe there's a process for this, and that is the correct process.
Yeah, I just want staff to straighten it out.
And I also appreciate you bringing it up, because it's my understanding that my name is being used with various commissioners by the applicant to say that I am spearheading some movement for the Arts and Culture Commission to fund this, or to bring a funding request to the council. The cost of this, from the time I met with the applicant, the first time, potential applicant, I think, was, they were looking for thirty thousand dollars in seed money, then by the time they met with you or spoke to you, it was fifty or sixty thousand, and in speaking to representatives from the Parks and Recs Department, it became something like a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. This is why we need a joint subcommittee to meet with them and pin this down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Najarian, no? Okay, I have a number of items. I'll try to be fairly timely. Okay, starting with community meetings that are going to be held for our weather preparation for the foothill communities, and there are going to be two meetings. One will be held Saturday, September 26, at 10:00 A. M. The other will be held Monday, September 28, at 7:00 P. M. So, Saturday, the 26, at 10:00 A. M. Monday, the 28, at 7:00 P. M. And the location is going to be the Center for Spiritual Living at 4845 Dunsmore Avenue in Locustina. The Center for Spiritual Living, 4845 Dunsmore Avenue, Locustina. And if you need any information about, or if you want to, perhaps we could send an email, and people can forward it on to their neighbors, they should contact Rich Wells, who's our public information officer, and his number is 548-4844. Rich Wells, 548-4844. We have to begin early, the city is beginning early, and I think the individual property owners, homeowners, have to begin early to prepare for rain. Those canyons are completely and utterly devastated, there's nothing but ash and dirt at this point, so they need to come to these meetings and contact professionals and see what they can do to protect their properties when the rains come. Then next, I want to wish everyone, all the religious Jewish community in Glendale, a Happy New Year that took place a few days ago, and the upcoming Day of Atonement, Yom Kippur, I believe is this week. So anyway, just a hello to our neighbors. And I will quickly go through an eight-day, an eight-day experience, and I get tired just thinking about it, an eight-day experience in Korea. I don't think grueling or exhausting are quite the accurate words, but somewhere between those two. I attended a mayor's Pacific Summit, Pacific Rim Summit. All of the mayors, not all, but many mayors in the Pacific Rim. I represented Glendale Burbank, not only sent the mayor, they sent the vice mayor, which means that Ms. Friedman should have, should have gone. And then LA, other cities throughout California, there were over 200 mayors. Cities in Australia, Malaysia, the Philippines, Vietnam, Russia. Russia, of course, has a presence on the Pacific. And even the vice mayor of Tel Aviv, and a mayor from the Palestinian properties, nation. And anyway, they were quite jovial, and we all sat together, and so anyway, it was representatives from throughout the Pacific Rim. The conference kind of focused on creative cities. It was held in the city of Incheon, and it was all about creative urban development, how to go about making your city more creative, how to respond to the environment. My specific presentation was on cultural diversity, and it was very well-attended. It was obvious that many of the mayors there, from some of the different nations, were very interested in hearing what Glendale had done and what we had to offer and how we went about doing it. So there were lots of questions after my presentation, but in between those meetings, I managed to drive an hour and a half into Seoul to meet with the Minister of the Environment, the National Minister of the Environment. That was a real eye-opener. That has to do with the concept of a green Korea. That is what the government is pushing in Korea at all levels, not just the federal authorities, but the provincial authorities, the local authorities. Anyway, very interesting man, very intelligent person. The next part of the trip had to do with our sister city. It's called Gosan. It's just a beautiful, beautiful coastal port on the east coast of Korea, the East Sea, or what the Japanese call the Sea of Japan. Just a beautiful city. The mayor was very, very impressive, and everything about the city, I think it's a wonderful match for Glendale. And one of the things that we'll be doing, they will be sending fourteen middle school kids along with their teacher, and they'll be interacting with the Glendale School District, and hopefully, there will then be fourteen Glendale kids that will get to go to this beautiful city, get to go to Korea, and sort of an exchange program. And I was very impressed with the city itself. Like I say, I think it's a perfect, perfect match for us. And then following those two activities, began the tour of, quote, "Green Korea," and that was basically driving to companies and talking to government officials that are working on energy-saving projects. This particular section of the country is sort of the world leaders in the LED bulbs. So in other words, Korea's already gone past fluorescence. Here in the United States, we're pushing fluorescence, they've gone on to the next generation of energy-saving lighting. And also, there was a lot of companies and a lot of activities all over Korea that had to do with media, interactive media, LCD, LED. to do with media, interactive media, LCD, LED, what they call media poles, where people are just able to walk up to these locations and just do incredible things, touchstone or touchscreens. And anyway, it's just unbelievable how high-tech the entire country is. Not even the countryside, even smaller cities still have these opportunities. I spoke to two specific companies that expressed an interest in coming to the United States. One company has four PhDs, four American PhDs, that they employ here in California, Irvine. And they're now ready to go to the next stage, to go beyond just research and to go on to perhaps open up a facility. And I talked about our San Fernando Road, I called it the San Fernando Road Creative Corridor, of course, and Brand Boulevard and all the other areas here in Glendale that we could accommodate them. So I'll be referring those companies to the staff. And then I want to thank the president and the executive director of the Korean Federation of Los Angeles that made it possible, arranged for the summit, the interviews, et cetera. And I had the opportunity to travel with them, with Chang Lee, who's a local planning commissioner, and Richard and Scarlett Um, who are, I would call them 70-plus. And boy, do they have energy. I mean, I was probably holding them back, but they were determined to have me basically see every updated energy-saving exposition in the whole country, and I think they pretty well succeeded. So anyway, it was a very interesting trip, and I enjoyed it very much, and hopefully we'll have something positive come from it. But the sister-city relationship, for sure, I'm really looking forward to interacting with them, interacting with the kids when they come to visit us.
Mr. Mayor, you left out one part. The mayor Burbank, Mr. Brick, mentioned you now have rock stars.
Yeah, 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 I wasn't going to mention that.
Yeah, well, it was mentioned at the airport commission meeting, that you played two instruments in front of how many people?
About 1,100 or 1,200 people.
What instruments did you play?
I have no idea what they were. I have no idea.
You went behind Michael Jackson's.
I had a big smile on my face, and I appeared to be fairly proficient, but I have no, I don't even, I don't know their names. But yeah, it was very, very.
You're not on YouTube, right?
Yet. Yet. Yeah, I'm sure they had it all, it's all on DVD somewhere, because we were totally energized.
Maybe you can get a copy.
With everything that.
Put on Channel 6.
That they do. Anyway, all right. We have another presentation.
Somebody's getting sweating.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. This is Marilyn Gannell, and tonight, we're here on behalf of the Glendale Fire Department and the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club. And we're here to invite you to our Glendale Fire Department Annual Awards Luncheon on October the 7th. It will be from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. in the afternoon. We've had many challenges this year, but we've also had a number of accomplishments inside the organization and outside the organization. We're going to be recognizing members of the community as well as firefighters and business leaders here in the community. We expect it to be just an outstanding event, and we would really appreciate if the community would show up and many of you as possible. The tickets for the event are $65 apiece, and if you'd like to get more information, you can go to our website at glendalefire.com, dot org, or dot net, any of those, or you can call 818-550-5616 for more information. And I think the flyer is showing on GTV6 right now as we speak. Marilyn.
Yes, and I agree with everything the chief has said. And as a 20-year member of Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club, this is one of our biggest and most important projects, to have an opportunity to recognize the good work that our firefighters provide all the time, not just when there are acute emergencies, but all the time. And when we go to bed at night, we can be comfortable knowing that they are ready to get out and help us at the least flick of necessity. And I also will be looking forward to seeing you at the Hilton, at our event. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Why don't you, well, I'll read the date again. Wednesday, October 7th, from 11:30 to 2:30 at the Glendale Hilton, City of Glendale Fire Department Awards Luncheon 2009. And next, I have Edward Laffian and a friend.
No, next is actually consent.
Oh.
Consent.
All right, all right.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, following our routine, it may be acted upon by one motion, any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
May I remove the consent calendar at five?
May you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I will abstain from the minutes, I guess.
Minutes of September 15th reflects on September 1st, you were present, I believe, Ms. Friedman was absent on September 1st.
Okay, roll call, please.
Nodding those extensions, Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Now's the time for, would be the time for oral communications, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is a presentation portion of oral communication. I call Edward Laffian to the podium and his friend Vic.
He's been in that costume for the last half hour.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the City of Glendale for sponsoring the duck splash, which is going on, will be going on October 24th. The funds will be going to City of Glendale nonprofit organizations. This Sunday, actually, we were at Harvest in Montrose, we saw Mr. Drayman, and he suggested we should come here and spread the word, so thank you, Mr. Drayman. And with that, Kwanas will be, right here, Ducky, Kwanas will be present at Honolulu Harvest Festival every Sunday. So please do stop by, say hi to the Ducky, and do buy ducks, as much as, as many ducks you can afford to buy. By the way, if ducks are not bought, something terrible happens. They don't have a home anymore, so they'll be used for Thanksgiving dinner. We don't want that to happen, do we? So please adopt a duck, and it's October 24th at Verdugo Park. If you haven't seen a lake at Verdugo Park, you will see it that day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Laffian. Thank you, Vic.
I just hope, Mr. Mayor, that it isn't 100 degrees.
Yes, it is.
Of the harvest market, wearing that.
It was nearly last Sunday. Hydrated duck.
Yeah.
Next, we have Arnold Uretzian.
Good evening, City Council members and Mayor. Mine is on a different tone than the last speaker, but 100 years ago, in a city called Adana in southern Turkey, more than 30,000 Armenians were slain at what is to be known as the Adana Massakers. It was a period of revolution and counter-revolution in Turkey. Amidst this tense atmosphere, the Armenian population was targeted. Anti-Armenian mobs, composed of Turks and Kurds, were created, which ransacked the Armenian corridors, burned and looted the Armenian businesses and homes, raped women, and slaughtered more than 30,000 Armenians by sword, gun, and mass burnings. This bloody episode became a precursor of the Armenian genocide, which would reach its climax in 1915. So living in the second-largest community of Armenians in the world, we felt it necessary to commemorate this tragedy. With sponsorship from the Glendale Public Library, Abriel Bookstore presents Adana 1909, a Centennial Memorial of the Adana Massakers. The event will take place on October 11th, 2009, at 4:00 p.m. in the Glendale Central Library Auditorium. We will have with us historians Aras Arafyan from London and Garabed Mumjian, who will present lectures about the Adana Massakers. There will be a multimedia presentation entitled "Adana in Memoriam," inspired by the work of famous Armenian authors Siamanto and Zabel Yassayan. And one of the most important aspects of this event is a photo exhibit entitled "The Destruction of Armenians in Adana," which will be the first public installation on U.S. soil of photographs taken at Adana 1909 by Ernst Jörg, a German political activist in the Ottoman Empire. They give us an interesting and grim insight into the Adana Massakers. The exhibit will run from October 5th to October 29th, 2009, in the main floor of the Glendale Central Library. And the opening reception will take place on October 11th at 7:00 p.m. For more information, contact us at Abriel Bookstore, 818-243-4112, or Elizabeth Gregorian at the Glendale Public Library, 818-528-3288. And I welcome all of you and the City of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Christine Harmon and Jim Canfield. Right, I tell.
I'm president-elect for the Montrose-Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce, and we're here once again to promote the Oktoberfest, which is only two weeks away.
Well, he's working on it. We've been, as volunteers with, oh, I'm Christine Harmon, hi, remember me from last week, by Glendale. We are, as volunteers of the chamber, we are working very hard to make the Oktoberfest a complete, can't-miss event. We want to draw people to come to Glendale from outside the area. And they come for Oktoberfest, have a good time, get a look-see around Glendale a little bit, and think, hey, this is kind of neat, we could come back here, have some fun, get something to eat, do some great shopping.
Open a new business.
Right. And they can also see what wonderful business people and services we have, so it should be great.
As volunteers, we're working really hard to make this the event of a lifetime, and we have a little video presentation of some entertainment from Circus Halle that will be frequenting the streets while we're doing this. Of course, they're doing it in New York City, not here.
I'll go out there and make whatever I can. I'll split it with you 60/40, that seems like a fair deal.
Can you smile?
[laughing]
Yeah, so if you're not excited about Oktoberfest yet, now's the time, it's going to be great.
I'm excited.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your talk.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anaheed Penijian, followed by Elaine Wilkerson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I am Anaheed Penijian. Yesterday, September 21st, the Consulate General of the Republic of Armenia held the reception to celebrate the 18th anniversary of Armenia's independence. The event took place at Dahlian Hall at 6:30 p.m. in Hollywood. It was a great evening, bringing the community together. There were Armenian clergyman, a distinguished group of professor, many dignitaries and community leaders, including Los Angeles County Supervisor Zev Jaroslavski, representative from Governor's Office, Lisa Kalustyan, the City of Los Angeles Mayor's Office, different diplomatic figures from Arab country and Mexico. Glendale City Council members are Anaajarian and Laura Friedman, Larry Zarian from Transportation Committee, and the other community members. Independence is the materialization of our dream. Armenia, 18-year-old state, which obtained its independence through sacrifice and the right for self-determination to preserve and build our young country as prosperous Armenia to future generation. All the representative of the government officer conveyed their congratulation to the Armenian community. And then Consulate General concluded the celebration, thanking the participant for this special event. Really, it was wonderful event, thank you, I wish to see you next year, all of you, in this event.
Thank you. Elaine Wilkerson, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff. I'm here tonight because I'm announcing, I'm announcing a special event that will take place on Tuesday, October 13th. And it is sort of a kickoff for the fundraising for the next Habitat for Humanity Homes that will be built in Glendale. It's going to be held at BJ's Restaurant and Brew House, and they have been very generous in providing a wonderful buffet of pasta and pizza and salad that will be available for a $20 charge, just $20, it's a great night out. And they are very much supporting us and helping us, and so we're very excited by this opportunity, and we hope that it's a Tuesday night, I realize that, but we start at 5:00 so that you can come have dinner with us before your council meeting, and we hope you can, because we particularly moved the time to 5:00 so that that would happen. Unfortunately, it is a Tuesday. But this is an opportunity for the community to start supporting this wonderful Habitat Homes campaign. And so anyone who wants to join us and to get a ticket reserved in advance, and I advise doing that because there is a limit on the number of tickets, they can send a check to the Habitat Office at 400 South Irwindale Avenue, Azusa, California, 91702. And otherwise, the tickets will not be $20, they will be $25 at the door as available. But BJ's is at the corner of Broadway and Brand, for anyone who doesn't know, northwest corner, and they have great pizza. And we hope that everyone joins us so that we can have a great kickoff. There will be entertainment. Janie Quintero is going to do a wonderful flamenco demonstration, and we're looking forward to that. We'll have music, there'll be a small raffle, the ticket has a number on it, you don't have to buy anything else to be in the raffle, you just have to buy your ticket to attend. So $20 checks, or whatever. I have some tickets with me here, but I know you're a little busy, so I won't be pressing you tonight. But I do hope you can join us, and we hope everyone in the community seriously considers being part of this effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilkerson. All right, Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the friends of Glendale Library.
There's so much that we still don't know about what happened back there in the early 19th century. There's so much we still don't know. And Michael Bobelian, his grandparents were there and gone, and he's a Columbia journalist, Columbia Law School of Journalism graduate, he's also a lawyer. He's written a great book, and our former governor, George Dickmagen, has lauded this book, and that appears in the book itself. So feel free to come, it's for everybody. And it's 7 o'clock a week from today at the library, parking is validated, come early, and we're looking forward to seeing you. And as I leave, signal if you want any of the information I have. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, please.
Under adoption of ordinances at 7A is an ordinance approving the entering into the Titan Higher Power Project power sales and acquisition contract offered September 15th, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor moves 7A.
Second. Full call.
Councilmembers Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
7B is interim urgency ordinance placing a moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Glendale also offered on September 15th, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mayor moves 7B.
Second.
Full call.
Councilmembers Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At 8A, under action items, a city manager regarding reports seeking council direction on the proposed reorganization of the Departments of Parks, Recreation and Community Services, Development Services, Planning, Housing and Community Services, and realignment of building safety functions in order to better align and coordinate those operations. At 8A1 is a motion approving city manager's recommendations for realignment of the operational components of the departments, noted and directing staff to prepare the necessary council actions to implement those recommendations.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. By way of background, and then I have just a few PowerPoint slides to highlight areas of the staff report that you've already received. But by way of background, at the end of last calendar year, with the announced retirement by Madeline Blake, then Director of Community Development and Housing, we set about to take that opportunity to evaluate what may be opportunities for some realignment of functions in existing departments, to look for ways to improve coordination and collaboration among those various functions. And with that, then, set about an evaluation among a number of departments and department managers, looking at ways in which we might be able to improve the alignment of both programs within community development and housing, as well as planning, parks, recreation, development services, and public works. Out of a great deal of conversation, evaluation, discussion among the departments came the plan that I'm presenting to you this evening for conceptual approval. Primary goals of the effort have been really to look for ways to better realign functions. I noted that the secondary benefit could, in the long term, be cost savings as we find ways for operations in those departments to improve effectiveness and possibly reduce costs, but that hasn't been the primary objective. There are some immediate, short-term savings by the elimination of one executive position, but that frankly wasn't the initial goal. The goal has really been to look for ways to improve service delivery in all of the affected departments through more direct alignment of services and coordination of programs. With that, as noted in the staff report, we have come up with really a realignment of four departments and those services into three. The Department of Parks, Recreation and Community Services would become Community Services and Parks Department, with the responsibilities noted here, in particular, Parks, Recreation, Senior Services, Youth Services, and alignment of the various social services and workforce development functions formerly in the Department of Community Development and Housing. Next, the Community Planning Department, formerly, primarily the Planning Department, consolidating all of those services and functions that really relate to land use entitlement, both the planning function, code enforcement, and here we've included permit services, but I need to note that our charter requires that permit services is part of public works. But in order to effect what we think really is a complete alignment, for all intents and purposes, from a functional standpoint, we would house permit services in the same building and really coordinate permit services under the same administrative direction and policies as we do the other land-based functions and services. So it would be, from the public standpoint, a unified administration of all of these services and programs related to land use entitlement and land regulation. Lastly, Economic Development and Housing, which would consolidate the functions of development services with the housing development and low-modern income housing services formerly in community development housing, including Section 8. The last bullet point on this slide notes that we're also looking at taking the film promotion function currently with the city clerk's office and consolidating that as well into economic development and housing. In this way, it's my view and that of the departments involved in evaluating this, we really get a better coordination and alignment of services in all of these areas, and present long-term opportunities for some cost savings and improvement in efficiencies. The implementation schedule for this, the various departments have been working for several months and really coordinating efforts and collaborating on issues. We would expect by the end of November to come back to you, if you approve this in concept, with a number of legislative initiatives to effect the changes and to formally implement the realigned department structures by the end of November of 2009. We do need, however, to find a place to house these new realigned departments, and we anticipate the new community planning operation, as well as development services and housing services, to be housed in the old police building, to take the reformulated Community Services and Park Department over into the Municipal Services Building, and then to leave room for both legal as well as city clerk to fight over the Parks and Recreation space in City Hall. And we would anticipate having the police building upgrade completed by the end of this fiscal year, with the other relocations to follow shortly after that. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. There is a motion approving this in concept. As I say, there are a number of actions you would need to take in follow-up to this, would expect those to be completed in the next 60 days. And the various departments are here to give you their views if you want them, or to answer any questions you have. I will tell you, it really has been a great effort working with all the departments, who, from the moment that we began to look at this evaluation, really stepped up the plate. And each and every one of them has approached this in a very positive fashion, from public works to fire, planning, parks and rec, community development and housing, and development services, and frankly, all of their staff and administrators who view this as a very positive move. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, well, I'll start with a comment, and that's that I am very, very pleased that we have finally put this together. I think it's been long overdue, and there is no question that the public will be better served by this alignment. There were little bit, time after time, when citizens will be able to go to one department, to one area, to one zone in the city, and get their questions answered, and do applications, and anything else that they need. And I think the staff themselves are going to feel much more comfortable working in these somewhat vertically orientated, vertically integrated divisions. So I'm very excited about it, and I'm looking forward to making the transition. Other reuse of the police building, I think, is key, and I think that's going to work out very well. People will have much better spaces to work in and be more productive, so it's 110% positive for me.
Mr. Weaver.
There's a lot of benefits, but one I like the most is getting a permit and code enforcement in one office, because too often, people were trying to figure out which department they belong in, and even staff was having trouble, so I see that as maybe the biggest gain in this reorganization. The other thing I was wondering, some of the titles you've given, you said, because we're bound by charter. So if, does it make any sense at all to put on the next election, if you want to do some cleanup language to change what's in the charter to give it a more appropriate name, or are you satisfied with the names you've come up with?
Well, my thought would be, when there are some other cleanup items that you might want to put on, you'd include this one. But I'll tell you, from a functional standpoint, the working relationship between Steve Zern and Public Works, Hassan Agani, this will be aligned in a way that the public, it'll be seamless. It'll operate like a single department. The coordination of policies, administration directions, will happen in a way that it'll work like it's one department. So at a time when there are other cleanup items to put on the ballot, then I think this is one of those you'd clean up. Otherwise, I really think it isn't necessary.
Okay.
So if we wanted to change it to the Dave Weaver Department of Engineering?
No, no you don't, no you don't.
No?
J.D.
Ms. Friedman.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. My first question involves the new Community Service and Parks Department and how it relates to the Park Commission. Something that I had asked the staff to look into was the possibility of changing, of altering the Parks Commission to have a take on the additional responsibility of servicing nonprofits and service groups, supporting them, helping them with grant writing, helping coordinate them, keeping master calendar and all of that. And it seems like, under this new configuration, that it makes even more sense for that commission to go in that direction. So that needs to be a part of that, so that it's not just the departments, it's looking at the commissions that report to those departments. The second is a question, which is about something that is in the staff report under fiscal impact. And it says, although the savings will be offset to some extent by adjustment of compensation for several managers who are taking on additional responsibilities. And while I understand that this gives an opportunity for staff to kind of grow into new positions, which is great, I just think we need to be careful, because right now, given what's happening in the economy, I don't think that this is the time that just because we're changing around departments, we use it as an excuse to be giving raises to people. Unless they're working more hours, because your responsibilities are changing, doesn't necessarily mean that your compensation should also change. So that's something that I'm sensitive to, and I just think, right now, given what's happening, that we need to be very, very sensitive about that, and I don't think this is an excuse to, not that you all don't deserve it, but this shouldn't be an excuse to start giving out a lot of promotions and raises in our departments. So just my comments are, I also agree that this is a good way to go. What I'm hoping that we will get out of this, well, first of all, just to take a little step back, I know that change is always difficult, so I want to thank all of the departments who have worked together on this. I know that any time you go in and you change an organization and it's potentially disruptive, it causes anxiety amongst the employees, and so I understand that that's always a risk, and I hope that that didn't happen, and I thank everyone for working together on this. What I'm hoping that this does, besides what my colleagues have said, is I hope that we can find a way in all of this to beef up our code enforcement. We've talked about this before, but as we're looking at things like illegal construction that's going on around the city, all kinds of code violations, I think it's frustrating to the public that even when they identify people building without permit on a Sunday, or a code violation that's happening in terms of a business operating, that we don't always have the manpower to go out and really effectively deal with that. So I'm hoping that within all of this, that we do kind of be sure that we give that department the focus that it needs and the manpower that it needs, and that in working more closely with the planning department, that that will be less of a frustration for the public. That's number one. And number two, I agree about finding ways of streamlining the permitting of building within the city. You know, we have this lag right now where there's not a lot being built, so we have the luxury of being able to put procedures into place, so that once we decide that it's a project that the city needs and that should go forward, we make it easier for developers to come in and to bring those projects forward in timely manner. So that's something that I hope that we can accomplish as well. So thanks again for all of your work on this.
Ms. Najarian.
I do support this, I think streamlining is good. And speaking of commissions, can we perhaps extend this to streamlining our commissions? Lowering the number, maybe putting the CDBG in with planning, or building and fire appeals, what's our commission?
Order.
Board of Appeals with planning, or, I'm just thinking, what's good for the departments should also be good for the commissions. And I think this might be a good time to take a look at that, because we're wiping the slate clean in a month or so, to take a look at it. I mean, I'm not, I'm just, the whole thought of the reorganization and discussion of the roles of the commissions, you know, maybe they take on new roles, a broader scope, as their overlaying departments are taking on a broader scope.
Yeah?
The sound you heard was a brick.
We don't have to attach that cart to this horse, do we?
No, we don't, we don't.
Conceptually, we need to think about it, take a look at it.
Ms. Raymond.
Oh, my goodness.
I think Mr. Najarian's going to be performing at Oktoberfest.
Well, I like that idea too, Mr. Najarian, I think that's a great idea, I would endorse that as well. And as we all know, very often, even being able to field applicants for some of our commissions, you mentioned, what is it, building and?
Fire.
Yeah, the Board of Appeals. I was assigned to nominate, I think it was a year before that we had an applicant. I think that might be a wonderful idea. Can we maybe agendize it as a separate issue?
We certainly can. We certainly can. We'll do that.
That would be terrific, to see what are likely boards and commissions that could I heard something from the city manager, you mentioned filming promotion, moving that from the clerk's department, city clerk's department. Did you mean film permitting?
Permits.
Okay. Because I don't think we have anything on the books right now.
No, we don't, we don't.
Film promotion at all.
No, we do not.
Which brings me to the point, but I hope one of these improvements is going to be that we will.
That's why you see that noted that way, because the anticipation is to move into more promotion of filming in development services.
And then, and I'm very supportive of this, I think this is terrific, I agree with Mr. Weaver on the standpoint that the streamlining, the permit services in the way that we have, I think is going to be very helpful, to take some of the mystery out of just folks who want to do an improvement around their house, I think that will be very, very helpful. I also can't help but make note of the fact that this is probably a, what, six-year, eight-year
I was assigned to nominate, I think it was a year before that we could, before we had an applicant. I think that might be a wonderful idea. Can we maybe agendize it as a separate issue?
We certainly can. We certainly can. We'll do that.
That would be terrific, to see what are likely boards and commissions that could I heard something from the city manager, you mentioned filming promotion, moving that from the clerks depart, city clerks department. Did you mean film, filming permitting?
Permits.
Okay. Because I don't think we have anything on the books right now
No, we don't. We don't. That's right.
... promotion at all.
No, we do not.
And which brings me to the point, that I hope one of these improvements is going to be that we will
That's why you see that noted that way, because the anticipation is to move into more promotion of filming
All right.
... in development services.
And then, and I'm very supportive of this, I think this is terrific. I agree with Mr. Weaver on the, from the standpoint that, that the streamlining, the permit services in the way that we have, I think is going to be very helpful, to take some of the mystery out of just folks who want to do an improvement around their house. I think that will be very, very helpful. I also can't help but make note of the fact that this is probably a, what, six-year, eight-year Valentine to Mr. Quintero and perhaps Mr. Weaver. This has been a long time coming.
Eight years, for sure.
Yeah. So it's good to know that the letter wasn't in the dead letter office, but simply delayed in its delivery, and I'm very happy to be part of the council at the time when it found its way to the dais. I do have one other question, and that has to do, if I could ask with the city manager, can you give me just an idea of, we're talking about the reuse of the police, former police building, how do you see that lining up over there? In other words, the status of, the status of the building and so on?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Drayman, at this point in time, we have an architect on board who's working with both the development services and the planning department, to get their input on how we would lay that building out. So essentially, what you're going to see is the two departments occupying one building. We also need to have a meeting room there, a full meeting room for the commissions and DRBs. So right now, we're trying to kind of reorient the building. You know, there's a rear entrance to the building that really wasn't functionally used, it was more of a private entrance for the police department. Our objective there is to open that up, so that as you transition from the parking structure into the back of the building, this is user-friendly, a bit of an overused word, but user-friendly to the public coming in, and keeping those public spaces, especially the meeting rooms down there on the first floor, and then probably more than likely with the offices in the upper second floor. So we will be utilizing what has, is now the jail area and demolishing that out.
I was going to ask Mr. Mayor whether we get to vote on which department uses the jail cells and
Well, there has been some debate, debate between the two department heads, Mr. Lands of Fame and Mr. Haganey, how they want to keep it, do they want an office, no, I'm kidding. But the idea is, is that we would demolish that out and utilize all of that for primarily office space, but also it's possible the meeting room orientation might be there as well. So we're getting kind of close to the first blush at this, that we can come back and talk to the two departments with, and begin to fine tune that in order to get construction drawings. As Mr. Starbird indicated, we have a pretty aggressive schedule to get this done by the end of this fiscal year. We have an HVAC contractor that you've previously approved, that is, that is on board and addressing that particular issue, and now we're just trying to fine tune the space utilization of the building.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, my last question, and the reason for my asking for that little bit of a rundown is because I was curious about hearing what the disposition of the jail cells might be, because they have a look, that look is rare out there in the broader community in terms of, it gets a lot of use for filming, and could and would continue to do so, which is a revenue. And I hate to mention this word, historic, but that figures in, and so why don't we all groan collectively at the next phrase I'm going to utter, which is the concept of a municipal museum on our campus. And so before we talk about completely gutting that area
I see Steve Blanching at the moment.
Well
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm just trying to think where we'll put them now, so that'll be our next, our next challenge.
I only mention it because I've been mentioning this pretty consistently with regard to that building since April of 2007, so anyway, I'd like to
I will.
... put that note on the record.
See where that goes. And yeah, for the record, hopefully, this rehab and adaptive reuse of the building will sort of focus on the concrete floors, and let's give it the mid-century industrial look. I think it'll be a lot cheaper, and be quite trendy, and I mean, I don't expect that we would do drop ceilings and that sort of thing. Let's see where we
Mr. Mayor, there's some, several opportunities. One, not the least of which is, we're looking at making this a lead building,
Right.
So we can go for that certification.
Right.
The other is, there are some components to that building, some of the bathrooms have all original fixtures in them.
Right.
Our intent is to maintain all of those, very unique, in fact, several of the bathrooms in there, and that's the original fixtures. So as much as we can maintain those kind of features in the building, that's what our goal has been.
And then finally, let me just say, I hope this doesn't affect Saudi Kardashian, I mean, Qasakians' opportunities at the Academy Awards and all of the
Mr. Mayor and council, just to let you know, as far as filming promotion goes, our office right now currently, and always has, for as long as I've been there, done the processing of permits. Promotion of filming hasn't been an organized effort by our part, just because we have staffing issues, we do not have the manpower to do it, it has been done on an ad hoc basis, either individually, myself going to the American Film Institute, just outside of our borders in Los Feliz, and talking to the faculty and students there, or just trying to change the perception amongst the industry, amongst the people in the biz, so to speak, that we are friendlier to filming now than we have been in the past. We just felt that in an effort, concerted effort to bring more filming to Glendale, which lies within a 30-mile zone of the studios, it just made more sense to have it in the department that's supposed to encourage economic development in the city of Glendale. So as far as our discussions have gone, we will still do a lot of the permit processing, hopefully, one day transitioning that, also, under the same auspices like City of Pasadena has a filming desk, and even City of South Pasadena, before the time being, the promotion, the aggressive promotion of the city of Glendale for filming opportunities will be done through economic development.
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Pepperd, I'm just curious, when the Housing Authority meets, is George Chapchan going to sit up here now, or is Jess Duran going to sit up here? Have you thought about that?
Well, there may be, there may be more than one executive attending that meeting, depending on the issue that's before them, because we'll have low-modern income housing development in the development services, and you'll have the CDBG programs and the Section 8 programs in the new community services, so you could have more than, more than one individual bringing reports and discussing them with the commission.
Just curious.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just a couple of supplemental comments. We'll be sensitive to the issues you've raised about the building, and at some point, well before we get into construction drawings, we'll bring some concept drawings back to you for discussion. Two, I'd like to carry on with a little bit of Ms. Friedman's comments about the implications for staff, because a change of this nature does bring with it some level of fear and angst by both staff and the departments for which there's some consolidation, and of course, the staff of Community Development Housing, which that department will no longer exist, at least as an independent department. As this evolved, one of our first discussions was with Madeline Blake, after she'd announced her retirement, getting her thoughts on it. But the next step was to sit down with Jess Duran and talk to Jess about his thoughts. And I want to, in particular, thank Jess for the way that he really stepped up in a positive way to help look at how to make this work, really looking for ways to improve it. Jess has continued to help drive it, in a sense, ever since then, in fact, just recently prepared for me a bit of an implementation plan. If this is approved this evening, all the details that we need to begin to address as you start to roll this plan out. And then the departments, or the department heads in the various departments, Steve Zern, George Chapchan, Phil Lands of Fame, Hassan, we had a meeting shortly after the first two with Madeline and Jess, to just sit down and broach the broad topic. And I will tell you, before the day was over, they were meeting among themselves to talk about all of the details and the various issues we needed to address. So where in many organizations you would see resistance and fear, just the opposite occurred here. I met a little over a month and a half, two months ago, with all of the administrators of the departments and managers, and I will tell you, it was a collective positive response, looking forward to new opportunities for many of them, new collaboration opportunities, new ways for them in their own positions to grow and expand the work that they're doing. So it has really been a very positive experience, unlike what you might expect, where there could be some resistance to the change and more of a negative fear, it has been absolutely the opposite experience with this, and that says a great deal about the organization and the staff. With that, I'm recommending that you approve the concept by the motion included in your package.
Mr. Najarian.
And let me take your comments one level lower in the management ladder. Are the rank-and-file workers who would be, I mean, sometimes, we all know, just moving someone's desk to the other side of the building, you know, I had a window view before, now they don't appreciate me, I've got a jail cell now, or whatever it might be. Are we reaching out to the first-line
Oh, yeah.
... level of, everyone's okay with that?
But frankly, once we start to get into facilities, that's where those kinds of things will begin to occur. But again, you're looking at the executives here who are already working with their managers and their rank-and-file staff. And of course, you'll have somebody who now will have a colleague with a different function, which opens up opportunities, but also presents some of the concerns you've expressed. We're trying to be very sensitive on the people's side as we continue to work through this change, but so far, it's been very positive.
Mayor, may I move eight, eight-one?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Hallelujah. Yes.
At AP is Director of Development Services regarding 2448 to 2468 Honolulu Avenue. Proposed terms for a ground lease agreement with the Trader Joe's company. At AP, one is a motion authorizing staff to continue to negotiate a ground lease agreement.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, let me go to Emile Tadavosi, Assistant Director for the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the second exciting project to bring before you today. As the staff report indicates, the subject property is located on Honolulu Avenue, just across the street from Fire Station 29 and the Montrose Branch Library. It bookends the Montrose Shopping Park, and it's an ideal site for an anchor use, anchor tenant. And during the city's outreach efforts in 2007, it seemed that use of this type of small neighborhood grocery store kept on reappearing during the discussion, specifically Trader Joe's being mentioned numerous times. With that in mind, during this year's International Council of Shopping Centers, ICSC, there was an opportunity to share the idea with the corporate, pardon me, the corporate Trader Joe's community. There seemed to be a mutual interest, and we have successfully continued to discuss potential lease terms. This evening with me is Mr. Doug Yokomiso, who I will introduce in a moment, but for doing that, I'd like to very briefly go over the lease terms that we have discussed. The initial lease term would be for 10 years, with six five-year extensions, for a total of 40 years. The rent would start at about $220,000 a year, it's a market rent, market rate rental structure, and would be adjusted every five years per CPI. The city has committed to deliver the site clean of any hazardous materials, but as is conditioned, without any further improvements. Again, the lease structure puts the entire responsibility and liability of the site on the tenant's responsibility. Accepting out from the lease is a five-foot strip of utility easement along the southern portion of the site, where there are currently power poles adjacent to the residential parcels. In terms of the project entitlement, we anticipate the design would proceed in the next few months, and would go before the DRB for approval. The store is going to require a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic, alcohol beverages. We're not sure if the design would require any standards variance at this point, but if they are required, we would group them together and take them with a conditional use permit hearing. We anticipate coming before you with the final lease terms before finalizing the design and going public to the DRB. And with that, if you have no questions for me, I'd like to introduce Mr. Doug Yokomiso.
Thanks, Emile.
My pleasure.
As you said, my name is Doug Yokomiso, and I'm the Vice President of Real Estate for Trader Joe's. I think Emile succinctly outlined the deal. I mean, he made it sound very simple, but it is the culmination, probably a year and a half of discussions we've had with the city staff, and I would have to say, working with Emile, Elena, Alan, pretty much everybody on the city staff, whoever we needed there was there. I mean, we've had a number of meetings, just to discuss all of the terms, to discuss the concept of the design, and I think we're at the point where we're really ready to move forward very quickly, once we get the go-ahead here, hopefully. So if you have any questions for me, I'm available. Otherwise, I think Emile summed it up.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a seat. I have two speakers, Dale Dawson, followed by Andrea Humberger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. Dale Dawson, Montrose Shopping Park Association President. Before I speak to the Trader Joe's issue, just to go off subject for a moment, I want to mention that the jail cells in Old Town Montrose are still intact in the dog groomers, and they work well within the scenario, so this is something to consider, they're still, they're still in place. Wonderful decor. The Montrose Shopping Park Association believes that the introduction of a Trader Joe's Market into our community would be overwhelmingly beneficial in a number of ways. You will recall that as a result of the MSPA's appeal to city council, and as a follow-up to Mr. Hassan Haganey's report to council on August 21, 2007, community meetings were held to solicit input from merchants, shoppers, property owners, and residents of Montrose as to their desires for the future of the shopping park. Among the ideas brought forth was the recommendation to seek the city's help in locating a suitable tenant for the former Haider Ford lot at the far end of the 2400 block, currently designated Municipal Parking Lot Number Eight. A tenant with significant stature and appeal would become a desperately needed anchor for the west end of the shopping park, increasing consumer traffic and extending the viability of retail space to all three blocks of Honolulu Avenue and its adjacent venues. Trader Joe's is, in the estimation of the MSPA, an excellent candidate to anchor this location for the following reasons. Number one, Trader Joe's is an established shopping destination, and has the name recognition and reputation to draw consumers to come to its many locations. Number two, the Montrose Shopping Park would benefit greatly in its overall mix of businesses to add a grocer. This would give our clientele a more consistent, rather than simply an occasional reason, to patronize the shopping park. The benefits would extend throughout the shopping park, as customers would have a compelling reason to traverse the entire length of town. Number three, Trader Joe's is known for its commitment to the local community, and would provide much-needed employment and income for families in the immediate area. And number four, the addition of Trader Joe's as the western anchor would change the business dynamic dramatically, making the 2400 block viable and attractive to retail. The concentration of retail merchants in the 2200 block of Honolulu Avenue, in particular in the restaurant trade, has relegated the 2400 block to a lesser number of retail stores and a larger number of service businesses. The resultant scarcity of foot traffic in the 2400 block perpetuates the situation, making it difficult, if not impossible, for retail merchants to survive there. We believe Trader Joe's would change that quite dramatically, as I mentioned. In conclusion, the stimulus to the local economy, and to the Montrose Shopping Park in particular, would be profound if Trader Joe's were to become a business partner in our community. The MSPA enthusiastically urges council to adopt this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you.
Andrea Humberger.
I had one there for Emile, too, maybe we should give one? I'm sorry. I'm back to give to him. Hi, Andrea Humberger, speaking on behalf of the Montrose Verdugo City Sparhite Neighborhood Association. We formed our association in 1997 with the mission of uniting our neighborhoods to protect our quality of life, and we're weighing on this, weighing in on this issue, because we feel that the proposed construction of a Trader Joe's in our neighborhood can and will impact quality of life issues for our neighborhood. At this time, we neither support nor oppose the construction of a Trader Joe's in Montrose, but we do want to make the city aware that the proposed store may have significant impacts on our neighborhoods, since it's located within our association boundaries, and is immediately adjacent to homes on Broadview, which are also within our boundaries. So areas of concern include, but are not limited to, traffic, parking, design compatibility of the building, noise during construction, noise during store operations, cleanliness, smells, and pest control. So therefore, we're just here basically to request to be included in the process, to be notified of the meetings, public meetings, you know, in the design review process and the environmental review processes, so we can participate environmental review processes, so we can participate and provide meaningful input as this process moves forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Humberger. All right, any comments?
No, he didn't want to come in.
Adjusting the air, I see.
Mr. Weaver?
Come in. I think it's great. The only thing we need to do next is bring Bob's Big Boy to Montrose. Remember, Bob's Big Boy was founded in Glendale, and the founder is Mayor of Glendale up on the wall, and we have no Bob's Big Boy in Glendale anymore. So, that's a big draw with people, let's see, from 50 on in age at least, remember Bob's Big Boy for sure, the drive-in down on Colorado, whatever. So I hope we can find a spot up in the Montrose area to bring Bob's in, too. But traders out there will be great. It'll sure anchor that western end. You have a lot of residential, will be in walking distance to come to your store. Welcome aboard, I hope.
What comments, Mr. Drayman?
Only to say that I think I'm on record, obviously, as supporting this. I think Trader Joe's will be a perfect fit for the Montrose area, Montrose, Sparheights, Montecito Park, et cetera, south part of La Prisenta, and I think that it will be a very positive step, both in terms of consumer use in the area. We have limited grocery facilities in the area. This will be very beneficial in that sense, but it'll also... Thank you, my time is up.
Yeah. You got the message.
Anyway, that perhaps is a reminder that I'm flapping my gums a little too much. In any case, I am very supportive of this. I think it will be exactly what the doctor ordered in terms of retail business and in terms of convenience for our residents. Trader Joe's has a business model that operates very much like the business model of our Montrose stores, which is high level of customer service, good quality products, and an ownership that remains invested in the local community. And so for that reason, it is a perfect fit.
Or a perfect match. Yeah, I'm also excited about it. I think this is going to work really, really well for the merchants in Montrose, for the surrounding neighborhood. I think it'll really be an attraction. I think people will, in fact, as Mr. Dawson mentioned, I think people will, in fact, shop there and then go on to do other things in the Montrose Shopping Park. So I'm very excited about it, looking forward to the design, I think, is excellent, and looking forward to having it go up quickly so we can start shopping there, at very reasonable prices, I might add, for gourmet food. Any other comments? Can I have a motion?
I will move this item. Second it?
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
At 8C is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Furnished Labor Equipment and Materials to Locate and Mark Underground Electrical Utility Facilities Within City Limits of the City of Glendale, Spec. 3385. C1 is motion authorizing city manager to enter into a one-year contract with Golden West Utility Company to provide locating and marking services for a total not to exceed $458,658.
May I move 8C1?
Any comments? Roll call?
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Thank you.
Next, please.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor and council, we now return to oral communication. Discussion is limited in time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, the first card, Mohamed Elmi, Mohamed Elmi, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Mohamed Tagi Elmi. I am a citizen. I am living 10 years to Galander. I am 83 years old. I am single, and I have a hard life, because my house rent is very, very expensive, over I need help. I want to apply to Town Council, City of Galander, Section 8 House, from Housing and Community Security Department of Galander. Thank you very much, your seriously, Mohamed Tagi Elmi, 323 North Cheviches Drive, Apartment F. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. We will refer your paperwork, we have your drafts, to the Section 8 housing.
Mr. Mayor, he's already been put in contact with.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Najarian. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Gabriel O'Sullivan.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I am a 50-year resident of Glendale, and have been very active in the community for many years. Now, I am one who believes in preserving history in many ways, and I am not against MONA, the Museum of Neon Arts. As a matter of fact, I was the one who called them and persuaded them to take the, I don't know if you remember, the jungle garden sign that was down on San Fernando Road when that garden place closed, and I begged them, and I called them, and I got them to take that sign. So I am not against it. What I am against is the idea of spending city or tax money on something at a time when things are so hard for the citizens of Glendale, many citizens, losing their homes. As a matter of fact, the funny thing about the neon sign thing is that I remember when the city banned neon signs and made everybody take them down in Glendale, and the only ones that were left was Sealease, which the Glendale Historical Group helped fight for, and they even wanted to take down the Forest Line Cross. So, and of course, now, they are two of our big ones that are still left, and Caruso, of course, with his sign on the corner of Central and Colorado, and his Eiffel Tower on top, I guess he got his own way on that one. But anyway, it seems ironic now that the city is going to house the MONA Museum of Neon Arts. After listening to Madam Friedman discuss why we were doing it, I thought that was very good. It clarified the fact that these buildings were there. I mean, I realize that, but I had thought they were going to go ahead and knock them down and do the pass-through. I do think it's great that we're going to use them, and that they will be, and I think as long as the city doesn't have to put out any money to worry about security, to worry about whatever, and they will take care of that, that's fine. I just don't see any more of our tax money being spent on a non-necessary project. I believe that at this time, that we will need more of our vital services to be kept. There are many residents in Glendale who have lost their jobs, their homes, and therefore their quality of life. But we do not need to lose any more of our quality of life. We need to keep our police force as it is, not let any more police officers go. Again, we're back to that there's still talk about at least 12,000 prisoners from the state, releasing those prisoners, and that 2,000 minimum will be coming to Glendale. Now, are we going to be dealing with more prisoners, more problems, more crimes, with less officers? I think that's wrong, and I don't think it's a time to spend money, as I say, on things that are not necessary, that are frau-frau, or whatever you want to call them. I am for the museum, I think it'd be great, and it would be somewhere to take visitors when they come to town, and I have nothing going on that. It's just the idea that I don't believe we ought to be spending money on something that is not a vital service, and that's my feeling on it. I want to clarify that. I do believe in protecting historic sites, and after all, I'm historic probably now, too, after all these years of being here. What'd they say? If it's around over 50 years, it's historic now. So there I am. Thank you very much.
Gabriel O'Sullivan?
Good evening, everyone. I don't have the benefit of having heard Ms. Freeman's arguments on behalf of this museum, but I am appalled that you are considering bringing a neon museum to Glendale, spending... I may not have all the facts, because I heard it second-hand, but that you are contemplating spending $1 million on refurbishment of that property, and that you are going to give the area to them rent-free. Please clarify this maybe at the end. But when I appeared before you nine months ago, raising issues about arts and culture in Glendale, I told you at that time that there are many, many organizations, there are many artists, who, after having appeared here at city council, many people approached me, not just people involved with the theater as we are, but artists who are looking for venues to display their works, and there aren't any places. There are a lot of talented people here in Glendale, and again, you are bringing people from outside. You're exploiting Brand Avenue. If there is a property available and there is money available to spend on it, why not utilize the people that are in Glendale itself? Also, nine months ago, I asked you about the Arts Council, which was supposed to be set up. Today, I quickly looked it up, I Googled it. All I saw was one document, which was written in January of 2009, and nothing further. If that Art Council exists, why can't that be set up or program things for local artists? Again, you are just thinking about business. Again, the Disney project on San Fernando Road was not an art or culture venture, it's simply to promote and bring business into the area. I am very disappointed that not one of you ever really pays that much attention to arts and culture. You are only concerned about business, and as Ms. Hammond said, in this culture where there is a concern for fiscal responsibility and being conservative, you're prepared to spend $1 million on refurbishment and give something free of charge. We at Luna, for instance, have been, I'm not here to appeal about Luna, we have been existing by the skin of our teeth by ourselves. But what I am saying is there is a whole community of artists out there, and nobody is acting on their behalf. Thank you. There's also a wonderful picture up at the top of Forest Lawn, the biggest picture in the world. Almost nobody ever goes to see that. It's a beautiful piece of art, and the municipal museum is a much better idea than a neon museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the speaker cards. Any comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Drayman?
I'll just address a couple of things. One is with relation to the Arts Council that Mr. Sullivan raised. My last check-in on that was about a month ago, maybe, a couple of months ago, and it is, as far as I know, has gone through the interview stage, which was the next stage that we set out for. The third stage was drafting of a draft work plan for a nonprofit arts council. It is in that phase now, and when the work program draft is completed, it will come to the council, per council's direction, for the council to look at it, make adjustments, ask questions, and so on, then a final work plan will be created. And at that point, we will see what organizations are in existence in the city or near the city that have the capability of fulfilling that work plan, who come forward. If there are none, then the city might entertain the process of the assistance or facilitating the creation of such a nonprofit. Unless, that's where it is at this point. I don't know what the, I don't know when it's calendared, I don't know that it is calendared at this point. I can't call on you, I'm not the chair. So that is, perhaps, Mr.?
Starbird, you had a comment?
I just want to note, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Drayman, that I received a preliminary draft of the staff report just today from Cindy Cleary, so it is moving along in a timely fashion. I expect in the next month or so, that'll be finalized and reviewed with you, and then brought back to city council.
Right. So I hope that helps, at least give you an idea of where that process is right now. The second issue has to do with some comments made about business terms related to the Museum of Neon Art. It is a mischaracterization to say that the city is giving $1 million to an organization. And rather than me go through it, if I may, I guess there's no one here from redevelopment, but, Mr. Starbird, perhaps you can go through the issue of the 100-foot-wide pass-through, the funds that were meant to go into that conversion as the plan, and now the 50-foot-wide pass-through, and how actually this facility will come in at a lower rate, a lower cost to the city, if you will, than had we just had an empty 100-foot-wide pass-through.
Yes, Mr. Friedman had a comment.
Also, before you do, maybe you can also clarify where this money is coming from. In other words, is this money that could otherwise be used for police, or would have otherwise been used for police or other services like that, so that we can just understand where this money is coming from and what it can and can't be spent on?
Let me ask the second question first. The funds for this are redevelopment agency tax increment funds generated by the central project area. They can be used for, they cannot be used for operations, they can be used for capital improvements and investment in either private economic development projects or public infrastructure projects that benefit the project area. And frankly, providing support by way of capital and improvements for a function like this is very much a typical kind of redevelopment purpose, and you see it in communities across California. These funds can't be used for operations, they can't be used for supporting police services or library services or the likes. Let me turn to kind of the broader issue that I mentioned this afternoon, in that is the sense that somehow we are giving something away without anything in return, and just the opposite is the case. Originally, as planned, the properties were acquired to create a passageway between Brand Boulevard, the Americana, and Central Park, Adult Recreation Center, and Central Library. The two properties acquired would have created a passageway of about 100 feet in width, frankly, a very large passageway, and one that, as we looked at planning for that, we were going to have some challenges in how we might activate it, so it would become something more than just a concrete passageway. It would be something that would really bring people's attention to that connection between the Central Park, the public facilities around Central Park, and Brand, and the Americana, and really bring some vitality and life to it. Happening on the concept of the MONA museum seemed to be the perfect fit. As currently structured, we would keep one of the two buildings that we acquired to be torn down. We would take down one of the buildings and use that spot to create a 50-foot passageway, with the building that was going to be acquired and torn down becoming the home of MONA, with, I think, an estimate of about the same amount of money that we would have invested in the public improvements on the 100-foot-wide passageway, being used to support MONA's interior improvements for the building, recognizing they also are going to have to invest in the building, some of their capital, electrical services, interior improvements, fixtureization. So we end up with a building that would have been torn down, with MONA, which is a recognized... So we end up with a building that would have been torn down, with Mona, which is a recognized museum and does attract people here in Glendale, with a byproduct of their activation of the, of the passageway, and opportunities to expand their programming throughout Glendale with just an almost unlimited number of opportunities and ways that we can work with them to utilize what is their art form. From an economic standpoint, after two years, we provide them the building rent-free for two years, then, and I forget the exact schedule, but essentially, they are committed to paying us rent on that building, which over the ensuing 10 years ramps up to what I think is about $7,500 a month. So we take what would have been a 100-foot passageway down to a 50-foot passageway, preserving a building that would have been torn down, in time generating an income from that building, while also having an activity and attraction in downtown Glendale that really can serve beyond that property to create activity and vitality and an attention to the arts throughout the downtown area. So as I noted this afternoon, it just seemed to me a tremendous win-win all the way around.
Okay, and what's next, please? Is there a motion to, is there any new business, Ron? Najarian?
As I was saying, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of Merrick Baker &amp; Strauss, P.C., to represent the interests of the city of Glendale in the matter of Inray Interstate Bakeries Corporation et al., bankruptcy case number 04-45814JWV, adversary proceeding number 09-04167. The retainer shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a budget and fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Second.
Roll call. Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next?
We adjourned.
We are adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.